What do you feel are the top three issues facing Anderson County?
Top three issues in Anderson County right now would be, we need to continue supporting economic development, creating high-paying jobs while maintaining a high quality of life. These are not necessarily in order, but our sewer infrastructure and third is our roads.
Thank you. Mr. Schallbe, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, no, I don't. Top three, top four. Top three, I'd say overdevelopment right now. Many of us are driving around seeing a congestion that we have, especially in my area of the district. Overdevelopment and unplanned development is probably our number one issue. It goes hand in hand with what we're doing for economic development, but I believe that we really need to do more about the planning about the development versus just sort of doing it. Secondly, taxes. You know, I speak to a lot of folks that have come to me and mentioned that their taxes are getting extremely high compared to where they've been over the last 10, 15 years. That's part of, it's part of the planning of the development that we want to continue our taxes. And of course, roads. The state roads are okay. A lot of the back roads are not so okay. So I think just in terms of some of the, some of the planning work that we can do around getting the roads in better order would be what I would say.
Mr. Tommy Dunn, same question.
Good morning. And thank y'all for having us here today. Not necessarily in order, but infrastructure, what we road and sewer, what we're responsible for, I think is a priority. Public safety is a big priority for us. I think that's one thing that government's responsible for. We've got a great relationship with the Sheriff's Department, given him, and I think he asked anybody at will, and our EMS system. We had a completely revamped, a few years ago, EMS system. And I've been part of it. Been a volunteer fireman for 40 years and seen how the improvement is. We wanted to take, my goal was always been if somebody needs emergency services, whether they're in Pendleton or Iowa, they get the same quality of care. And I think we've accomplished that. Our response times phenomenal. We've got other people coming from other parts of Southeast here to look at Anderson County and copy our system and look at it. And economic development, you can't never have enough jobs, good-paying jobs, good quality of life, and economic development is what it used to be to what it is today. We want to keep that up in the way things, and I'll touch on that in just a little bit, but economic development is definitely a priority. Thank you.
I would say the top three concerns for Anderson County right now is number one, the EMS system with radio communications and the timeframe for ambulance service with ALS units. There's problems within the units itself. The counties gave car washing cards to the EMS units as far as ALS units, and they have been called into car wash when an emergency came out. So that would be number one priority with Anderson County with the safety for our citizens because that is a concern that should be addressed and addressed immediately with response times. Our, coming into Anderson County as far as building, we're allowing too many buildings to be put on small properties. We're stacking them like cordwood. That's another problem that I see that in our area, especially in Districts Four and Five, we're having an influx of people coming into the county and our infrastructure really isn't ready for it. We have a lot to do as far as building our roads and getting some accountability. Anderson County needs accountability in every department, whether it's the roads and bridges or EMS. There needs to be some accountability. Thank you.
The next question will go to Mr. Schallbe first. Mr. Schallbe, what do you see for the foreseeable future of economic development in Anderson County? And what would you do to ensure continued success in this area?
Well, economic development's a lot of different things. There's, there's the whole idea of new jobs, there's the whole idea of just trying to create an environment where folks want to come here. Anderson County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the Southeast. You know, we have a lot of folks that just want to come here to do business, to live here. The quality of life is extremely good. But you do hear a lot about the word "economic development." You know, I run a business, we have 195 employees over there in District Four. You know, we hire a lot from the university. There's a lot of really good things here in the county that, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to bribe folks to come anymore. 30 years ago, you might need to create a lot of new jobs. We don't need a lot of new jobs right now. We actually need more people. The jobs are actually growing. You throw money at creating jobs and those are little ripples in a pool, you know? So as companies start to grow, you know, 10 years ago, we each had, you know, 35 employees. We have 195 now. So you, you've got enough infrastructure for the, for the, for the jobs part of it. I think really what we got to do now is because there's so many folks coming to the county, we're inundated with the fact that we don't have good roads, we don't have good infrastructure, and really it comes back down to planning. So what, what I would do is really take a look at what the volumes are looking like in terms of, I wouldn't gin the system and create more jobs for the time being. I think I'd sort of hold back on some of those fees and loos that we're doing, look at the tax dollars that we're saving and try to look at where we can actually improve infrastructure and plan for where we want, where we want housing. You know, Mr. McCurry made a good point about the houses. We are loading them like cordwood. And I feel bad for the folks that are moving to some of those places because they're really tiny, on very small lots. There's really not a lot of places to raise children, park your cars. I mean, I think we got to look at the kind of community that we want in 20 years as part of that plan.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, you will be next with that question. Would you like me to repeat it, please?
I'm good. If you would, do repeat it.
Sure. So what do you see for the foreseeable future of economic development in Anderson County? And what would you do to ensure continued success in this area?
I think the future of economic development in Anderson County is very bright. It's been, we picked it up since I've been on council. You can go back and look at what we've picked up, the jobs, the infrastructure that has been invested in Anderson County. Also, the, the fees, not fees, but the pay scale, highest increased and what it's done now to give people a good living. My whole goal has come on is people raising families. They born and raised in Anderson County. Their kids have to move out of Anderson County to get a good-paying job. I don't see it. We've turned that around. I want to keep it that way. And on the link of enough of, and what we're going to do is got to keep infrastructure. We just got a grant for sewer to help out on Exit 21 and 19, some other things. That, that will go good to help our sewer infrastructure to keep economic development. I just got a phone call this morning. We got a plant closing third shift. So we need to keep working and keep getting economic development, have good-paying jobs in Anderson County. You can't never stop and let up on that. And as far as, people don't understand about fee and lieu of. No giveaways, earnest. One of the biggest things they don't got on county council was First Quality Paper Company. It was abandoned mill site, plant site. They was paying, fixing to pay zero in taxes. Guess what they paying today? Not counting all the jobs that they've created. Those people are buying houses, those people are buying cars, supporting the families. I'm very proud of that and will take a backseat for it. So I appreciate it.
Mr. McCurry, same question.
I think Anderson County has so much to offer as far as economic development. As Mr. Dunn stated, recreating an old mill site. We have dozens of old mill sites that's overgrown that needs to be cleaned up. And then getting there, cleaning that up can bring in infrastructure, it can bring in economic development with other industries to come in and help clean it up. And when you clean up these old mill sites, not only do you get rid of the rat-infested homeless and/or drug-infested and even have dead people in there occasionally. We need to clean these sites up and it'll be so much better for Anderson County. It would draw more development, it would draw more business. And when you clean up an area like that, the surrounding area around it is going to fall in suit and you're going to see clean houses, you're going to see people caring about their community instead of letting it downgrade into the situation we've become. Again, it all boils down to accountability. We need to get in here and make accountability to these positions. And let's make Anderson clean and bright and as beautiful as it should be.
Mr. Sanders, same question. Would you like for me to repeat it?
Please.
Okay. What do you see for the foreseeable future of economic development in Anderson County? And what would you do to ensure continued success in this area?
Economic development in Anderson County for the future is on a great path. We continue to support our Economic Development Office. While I've been in office, the short term had over $1.8 billion invested in Anderson County. 3,160 high-paying, full-time jobs. I hear fee and lieu, fee and lieu. I think people, especially running for office, need to educate themselves on fee and lieu. There was something that sent to me about another sweetheart, fee and lieu deal for Michelin Tire, creating jobs that, manufacturing jobs that we don't need. Well, Michelin pays over $30 per hour average wage. My brother had a career, retired from Michelin, raised kids, put them through college. The fee and lieu, Michelin alone, in the last 14 years has paid over $54 million in property taxes. Last year, they paid over $3.7 million in property taxes. The Arthurx, the land up there, was county-owned, zero, zero tax coming in. Arthurx is paying millions a year. So we are on the right path. And there needs to be more education, I guess, to the public to help them understand a fee and lieu deal. We're not doing away with taxes. South Carolina has the highest manufacturing tax in the world, in the world. It's over 10%. Fee and lieu allows you to bring companies in and set that tax base at a 6% ratio or a 4% ratio based on the amount of investment, the number of jobs being created. So, you know, we need to educate ourselves on it. We need to be grateful and thankful. Our population in the last 10 years in Anderson County has grown over 23,000 people. We're at 210,000 by 2028. I think they're expecting to be 230-something. So, you know, and the average age is 40 years old. So these people moving here, they're in the workforce. They need jobs, they need opportunities, and all the great things in the sewer infrastructure, the $23 million we spent while I've been in office, the $9.8 million grant we just got, the Joint Wastewater Treatment Center for Pendleton and Clemson. We've got a lot of things going on and I just, I'm grateful and thankful for that. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn, you'll have the next question first. As the state and region continue to grow, what steps would you take to ensure the infrastructure is able to keep up with the continued growth?
One thing is the workforce as part of infrastructure. We can keep our job training up, keep our relationships working with Track Any Tech, our career centers with One, Three, Four, and Five, keep people, a good-trained workforce where companies will keep wanting to come here. Secondly is our sewer. That's a very big infrastructure thing. We just got a grant of $9.5 million, as I said earlier. And we've got a joint sewer plan agreement coming up with Pendleton and Clemson to help out. That's going to be tremendous for the savings to go in and combine. You get more grant money when you combine with regional things along those lines. And our roads. Roads is, is a problem. We've looked and we've done things, you know? Since I've been on council, we went through two recessions, hard times. We haven't raised taxes. We've kept, we've kept taxes staying, we've kept things afloat, kept things. So it's been hard on the roads to be able to raise enough money to get what we've done. And we've looked and looked and we've looked at different issues, studied different things. We've come up with, to take it to the voters, to let them decide on a one-cent sales tax to come up, being voted on by the people in November. Now, we could wipe out and completely close certain departments in Anderson County and wouldn't be enough to fix our road problem. It costs over $1 million to pave a mile of road now. And the way to get this done, and all of this will be monitored and accounted by the state, all the money will strictly have to go for infrastructure, for its bridges or asphalt, roadwork, it's public safety on roads. None of it goes to employees or equipment or nothing like that. I think it's a good thing. And another is the sidebar, I know people want to argue about it, but it's just a fact. People, you know, some people don't like to take the fact, but over 33% of that tax we come from people outside Anderson County. I think that's a good thing, too, that uses our infrastructure. Thank you.
Mr. McCurry, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. As the state and region continue to grow, what steps would you take to ensure the infrastructure is able to keep up with the continued growth?
Well, we do need more finances, but I think we can do that by getting in and cutting some of the budgets where wasted money is being done. Particularly not in favor of the one-cent sales tax for that specific reason. That's going to generate $50 million a year, as I understand, and over a seven-year period, that's going to be over $300 million. So just specifically for roads, I'm going to say no because I think the, the roads need to be accountable, like I said before, have accountability. If they can get in and redirect the way the road system is operated, I think it can be handled more efficiently with the funds that we have. I think they're getting upwards of $9 to $10 million now a year for the roads. And as Mr. Dunn stated, a million bucks per road, that's fresh from ground up. We have roads that need to be widened. One of them is White Hall itself. EMS is struggling to get through there as it is when we have four o'clock rush hour. So I'm going to say that that money can be directed in other areas, not specifically for roads, if it were to be passed, because our EMS system is the worst as far as, let's say not worse, let's just say the EMS system is the most needful as far as the finances over the roads, to be honest with you.
Mr. Sanders, same question. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, repeat it.
Sure, absolutely. As the state and region continue to grow, what steps would you take to ensure the infrastructure is able to keep up with the continued growth?
Our main, it's going to be sewer, EMS, Sheriff's Department, and our roads. Our EMS system that I keep hearing get beat down today is one of the best in the state. Two years in, less than two years, it received South Carolina's largest EMS leader or quality. Our EMS director received the same award. We have 90% compliance in nine minutes, 59 seconds or less. Nine fifty-nine, 90%. Prior to that, our best ever recorded was 60% compliance. The worst was 21. Our EMS system's working. We had three QRVs when we started this process. There's 17 now with paramedics. Paramedics was hard to get. It was a shortage of paramedics. We brought the paramedics under the county umbrella. They now have benefits, better pay, so we, we're fully staffed. They are retaining their trained, skilled labor. Our Sheriff's Department, we've given, I'm chairman of the Finance Committee. Everything the Sheriff's asks for, we've get them. They've got a state-of-the-art simulator about the size of this room. They can recreate the situation we're seeing right now and actively train. Bulletproof vests, secure body cameras. We are protecting the increase in wages with a new plan in place now that allows for increased raises every year. So we have great things in place now. Our roads, if you cut the solid waste department, it would take 30 years, 30 years to generate what that one penny sales tax will do in seven. And a million dollars a mile road, that's great. We spent $51 million on roads while I've been in office. And we've got 1,571 miles of road, 157 bridges, 54 of those bridges are low restricted now. So we've got to continue investing. Thank you.
And Mr. Schallbe, same question. Do you need me to repeat it for you?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I live on a road, I live on Highway 187 between 76 and 85. There's probably going to be about 1,000 homes that are already approved to go in there, haven't even started getting built yet. If you, if you're familiar with that area, you'll see that most of those houses aren't even on .2 acres of property. Their driveways are barely long enough to put two cars on. If there's a fire in one of those houses, they're about 15 to 20 feet apart, those fires, those houses are going up. I've spoken to many folks in that area. We've done nothing for infrastructure over there and those people are actually, I think, are in danger, by the way, that they're building those houses. We are ginning this system up by putting too many houses on small lots. We talk about infrastructure and EMS. I spoke to a couple of firefighters describing, the quick-response units are the most expensive units in the county to run. We pay a lot of money for those because they're not being, they don't get used all the time but they got to be available all the time. The MedShore deal that we have currently going on, that's a private company owned by a private equity firm, you know, and he mentioned that we, you know, we pay, pay the Sheriff's Department. They do a phenomenal job because they're part of the county group. We pay a private company to do the lion's share of the money, the money work and the revenue of that stuff. And I think we got to look at our EMS in terms of general timeframe. Couple firefighters told me the other day that they, they listen on Channel One, they get the call, and then they switch to Channel Two so they can't track how long it takes to actually get the time to, to the station. So my concern is that, where are we getting our data from? Are we getting our data from MedShore or are we getting our data from a third-party provider? I don't know if we've actually got the right information about how fast those calls are going. We really need to look at all the money that's getting spent, all the money that's getting spent and paid to a private, a private company to be doing our, to do our ambulance services. You know, we had, I know we had our issues back in the 70s and 80s with the ambulance services, but as a, as a go-forward with the number of people that are, that are coming to this county, we really got to look as if this, this, do we really want to rely on a private group to supply services to our, to our county residents? And going forward, I really think that's what we're going to be considering. I can also tell you on the congestion, that's, congestion is really bad about planning, right? I know, I know we've approved Buc-Ee's and I know some folks in the street might be happy about a Buc-Ee's, but I can tell you, most people in Anderson County don't understand why we're putting a Buc-Ee's at Exit 21. So it goes back to, economic development also requires planning around economic development. What is it going to do to our environment? How's this county going to look in 20 years? We want to make sure this county feels like a good place to live in 20 years. And the way we're going, we are careening out of control and we're going to, it will never go back. We'll have higher taxes, poorer services, sorry, Brandy. Thank you.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. McCurry. Mr. McCurry, if elected, what would be your top priority going into your term?
Well, I'm pretty sure it's obvious that EMS is priority one, but also possibility of zoning by reaching my constituents and asking them how they feel about R-40 zoning. I know for the realtors, they're not too happy about that, but R-40 zoning would give one acre per house and that would be more suited for what Anderson County or what I feel Anderson County should be like. I don't want to be like Greenville, I don't want to be like Atlanta, and I don't want to be like Charlotte. I want to be like Anderson, the town that I grew up in and the town that I love. So EMS is also number two, one and two on the priority because they are priority. We also need to clean up Anderson as far as our dilapidated mill sites. We are in trouble when it comes to our ambulance service. I think we have skewed numbers as far as answering systems. I know for a fact in my barber shop that we have lost a youth because of the lack of response of a QLS because it took the lifeline to have the EMS onboard to take care of that child. And we still lost a child because of 20 minutes without air. So in my barber shop, we see a lot, okay? 40 years, I know what the people want. I see what the people are going through. It's a blue-collar workforce and I talk to all aspects of EMS, fire, county, and all. So that's my, that's my answer. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, same question.
Same question. Want me to repeat it? Yeah.
Sure. If elected, what would be your top priority going into your term?
Top priority is continued economic development, jobs, public safety. I keep hearing all these houses in, on, in District Four. What, you've got to educate yourself. And we have a comprehensive plan required by the state that was enacted in 1994. We spend eight months, eight months all over the county getting input. I've never seen anyone here, there, at any of those meetings. And they've got to understand zoning works great. When the town of Pendleton annexes that property, we have no control. 90% of what's going on in my district was annexed by the town of Pendleton that was turned down by the county. So, you know, it's, that's a state issue. And, you know, maybe I'm running again for the wrong seat, maybe I need to be at that seat, I don't know. But with what the tools we had to work with here, I think we're doing a great job. We're going to continue to move forward. And I want to applaud everyone up here for throwing your hat in the ring, trying to make a difference. I care about this county. I'm passionate about it. I was born and raised here. I didn't move here, I didn't inherit a business to come here. I'm born and raised, self-made right here, and I'm going to die in this county and so is my wife. Thank you.
Mr. Schallbe, same question for you. Do you need me to repeat it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. If elected, what would be your top priority going into your term?
Top priority would be planning. You know, I, again, we mentioned economic development. Economic development has more than just one thing, giving fees and loos out. And I have been educated, I know what fees and loos are all about, and many of you do as well. There are 1,000 homes going up on my, on my road and people are concerned about it. I would try to get a moratorium on some of those zoning variances. And if, and I apologize for not being at the meeting in 1994 to do the plan, but in 1994...
[inaudible]
Well, I read, I read the minutes, too. You do a good job there. We, we really have to take a look at the entire county. 1994 numbers were very different than they are today. And I put a moratorium on, on the zoning, take a look, get every precinct back in. Some folks want it, some folks don't. It's, that's okay, but we actually have to engage the, the voters instead of doing it in a meeting. We got to have multiple meetings within the specific districts to kind of hear what folks want to do. And then whether they want, they want a Buc-Ee's in their area or whether they don't, whether they want to keep agriculture or whether they don't. And then based on what you get for feedback, we need to go back and look at where we want infrastructure. It should not just be haphazard all over the place, right? We got to plan out what the county needs to look like over the time. We go to lots of places in the country we're very proud of going to, they're beautiful because they actually had a plan. You want, you drive through a Maine, a Maine area, you enjoy your downtown areas, but you got to be able to get there. And many of you sat on Highway 123, Highway 76, you know, Highway 88, and there's traffic all over that time because we hadn't planned on where folks are going to be going to work. So my first thing, number one job is listen to what the people want in the county and then put together a plan and enact that.
Mr. Tommy Dunn, same question. Do you, do you want me to repeat it?
Thank you. Thank you, good. My priorities first would be continuing constituent service. I think that's very important. I take a backseat to none to listen to my constituents. I'm available 24/7. I've gotten calls 3:00 in the morning, people needing help, and I pride myself on doing that. Other things, economic development. Very proud of what we've accomplished in Anderson County, want to carry it forward, as I said a while ago. We're very, very fortunate to be in this part of the country where we're in. Other parts are already slowing down. We want to keep a diverse economy. It's very good to have, to have it. I'm showing my age now, but I remember about when I was little, Anderson County relied on cotton mills, one industry. I don't want to get back to that. We've got a diverse economy, I want to keep that economy going. Just a few minutes of my time, keep hearing somebody brought up about Buc-Ee's. I think somebody mentioned a few minutes ago, Buc-Ee's been approved. Anderson County has not approved Buc-Ee's. Buc-Ee's could go, they could go there today and build that building if they wanted to. They don't want to because they know the infrastructure needs to be picked up and they want to pay for it and do something. That's on whether that intersection's going to be fixed, if it is not, we like it. But Anderson County, they can go do that today if they want to. We have zoning in Anderson County right now. It's up to the people. My opponent feels very, very about his barber shop being closed, the government closing his barber shop, and I understand that. But yeah, he thinks it's all right for the government to pick winners and losers when it comes to zoning. Right now, we've got a system that's been in place now better than 20 years about zoning. The problem with it, people don't want to take a hand in zoning until something comes to their neighborhood and it's too late. Be proactive, that's what I try to do. We have a comprehensive plan, but it's always a moving document. It's not set in stone. It's always got to be a moving document, and we have plans. They go all around the county, having different plans, putting input before we don't get enough of it. But zoning is by precincts. You cannot do a moratorium on a building, it's got to be county-wide. You know District Two, talking about how poor it is and that, they're not, they want development. They're not, we couldn't, we couldn't get a moratorium on that in District Two, it'd be county-wide. Same way with zoning. Pottersville is the fastest-growing area in Anderson County, up in Pendleton there, District Four is overtaking it, but them people adamantly opposed to county-wide zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now we will do our two-minute wrap-up. Mr. Sanders, we'll start with you. Please let everyone know why they should vote for you.
Thank you. I was born and raised right here. I'm passionate. My wife, born and raised here. I was born and raised right here, I'm passionate, my wife, born and raised here, I'm passionate about Anderson County. I've built a life here, a career here. I want to see, I remember when we were a textile town and they shut down. I remember in 77, 78, when Michelin came, and it was like the greatest thing in the world. People had opportunities, had hope again. I want to continue to solidify the foundation for Anderson County for the present and for the future. I want to, when I'm dead and gone, I want to be able to someone to say, hey, he had a part of that, he cared about Anderson County. I care about our constituents on zoning, our precincts. If you'll reach out, call, I talk to multiple, I'm open 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. I spent months in the Fort precinct, working with them to implement zoning. You know, zoning, I would love to see the Pendleton area zoned, there's certain areas zoned. The worst problem any community can have is an unzoned area with sewer. When it's unzoned and sewer, we don't have control over what they do. The planning commission has a list of criteria, it's, it's not a motion. You can't go in and argue on a motion, you have to have facts. And when they turn it down based on a motion, they walk right across the street, file an appeal. Just to file an appeal costs the taxpayers $8,000, one appeal. We have multiple, multiple appeals. And if it has to go through the court process, it's over $20,000, $25,000. So, we've got to continue to educate our planning commission. I know we've added two more at large just based on the increase in population. But we have to continue to educate our planning commission to help them. They have more authority than anyone on council in an unzoned area. Zone it, hold me accountable. That way, I can sit, when it comes time to vote, you look at me and I have to make that decision. So, I appreciate it, I'm passionate about Anderson, I love serving, and whether I'm in this seat or not, I'll continue to volunteer and serve and make Anderson better. Thank you.
Mr. Schallaby.
I love this county. Well, when my family moved here 35 years ago, it was a whole lot different place. You know, we have, we have started a business, we created a pretty good business. We've, we've never taken any fees and lose. We've grown our business with our own backs, we make our own money. We got a lot of people that really enjoy living in the county and are very concerned about where, where we're going. We are in a situation unprecedented, right? This is probably one of the cheaper areas in the county than in the world to buy property. You know, and there's a lot of private equity firms that sit in New York City, then they fund these kinds of enterprises and they're buying up property, and they don't care what kind of quality of life we have here. You know, I run a business, I, I, that's my primary job. I, running for county council was probably the last thing I wanted to do. What I want to do is apply what I've learned in business and apply it to the county. You know, I'm very active in my community, I don't need to go to a county council meeting to find out we've got problems in our community. I meet directly with my, with my people. We, we're sponsoring petition signings to get zoning in place. And if you look at Anderson County, with the concern of all the money that's out there buying our property, most of Anderson County, if you look at the map, all the outside, there's no zoning, it's all white. No zoning. That means that there's nothing really the county can do to stop it. You know, I was at a county commission, we were trying to fight, we're trying to go after Fans Grove Circle by my area. Really, it's unzoned. So, what happens is, a couple of folks show up, they go ahead and raise their hands, please don't put this in our area. The planning commission can do what they want, but eventually, if they say no enough, that, that developer will come back through and sue the county. He's absolutely right, and there's nothing you can do about it. We've met the bare minimum standard, we have the right to put a houses there, we're going to go ahead and do it. So, as a business owner in the county and a person who lives in the county, my goal really would be to kind of spend some, a lot of time to put together the right meetings with not just the county council meetings, but within the specific precincts. People really have a concern about what's going on, and they don't feel like they're being heard. My goal is to listen to them, put together a plan by precinct, and bring it back to the county people to vote on it. That's the way to do it. Sitting at a county council meeting and talking about stuff doesn't do it. Getting out to the precincts and talking to people individually about their concerns actually does do it. So, if I'm voted, that's how I'll do it. Thanks.
Mr. Tommy Dunn.
Want to start, thank you to the Chamber of having us here today and everybody showing up. I love Anderson County, born and raised here, spent my whole life here, planning on dying here. Again, as I say, I love it. I was, I spent my whole adult life serving the citizens in the District 5 area in Anderson County. I started as a volunteer fireman, I've been, I still am a volunteer fireman, been one over 40 years. I was fire chief over 20 years in the fire department. I was asked to be on the planning commission, I was on the planning commission when it first committed to zoning. Then I was asked to be a fire commissioner who's over the fire departments. Then I was, had a group of people come to me and asked me to run for county council, and I ran for county council. Back then, I ran saying I want economic development, we was in a great place between Atlanta and Charlotte, no economic development. Look what's hap, don't take my word, look at the record, what's happened in the 15 years I've been on council for economic development. I said I wanted to make, we had a hidden crown jewel in Anderson County, nobody used or promoted, Hartwell Lake, look what Hartwell Lake has become, Green Pond Landing in itself. Second thing, I said we're going to have, a third thing, I said we're going to have accountability, talking about accountability. Reason you say this money's here or that money's there, because you can go online, look at any penny that's spent in Anderson County. It ain't always been that way. Somebody spoke a while ago, if you want some information, you file a, 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 a FOIA request, and you'll get it. Accountability, we've won awards for accountability, what we've done in Anderson County, and continue to do it. And I just want to say, I've got a record, I'm proud of my record, and it speaks for itself, and I love Anderson County. And I want to thank y'all, and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve Anderson County for 15 years I have been on there, and been fortunate enough for my fellow councilmen to let me, I think I'll be two years chairman of Anderson County Council. Very proud to represent Anderson County, and I continue it to be a, will be a privilege and an honor to carry on again. Thank y'all very much.
Mr. McCurry.
Lived in Anderson County my entire life, been a barber for 42 years. I talk to people, talk to you guys. Like I said before, the blue-collar people, the regular people, the preachers, the firemen, every aspects of the firemen, every aspects of EMS, every aspects of every employment available to Anderson County. I have probably the oldest and most popular barber shop in Anderson County. I am in touch with the people, it says on my sign. I know what the people want, I know what they're asking for. It's, I'm here to stand up for my district and do what's best for my district. If it be for zoning, because at one time, people did not want zoning because they didn't want nobody to come in and tell them what they want to do with their property. And I totally get that. But when you have RV parks and you have tiny homes being thrown in on top of other places in other communities that's already having bad roads, then it's not set up for that. We need zoning, and the people that I've already talked to at this point are totally for it. Now, as far as our golden jewel of Anderson, yes, it is a golden jewel for Anderson, and it can draw people, and it is drawing people by the tons. As a matter of fact, we're getting too many people in here at the time. We didn't build the roads to handle these RV parks. When you have, when we have a bass tournament, the boats can only go in one direction because roads are too narrow for them to pass practically. So, for me to be, to get into office, I'm here to make Anderson County a shining star all around, not just Hartwell Lake, but the city of Anderson. The city has so much to offer when we get in here and clean it up and get rid of all these homeless that's been shipped in here. There's a way to do it. I've talked to the people, I've talked to the deputies, I've talked to SLED, there's ways to do it with ordinances, so you don't sleep on the street. Let's get these people out of here and clean up Anderson. Thank you.